The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the joint board meeting Wednesday, November 9th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the members to please introduce themselves, standing my far right.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Orlando Cal, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony DiMatto, City Council.
Jody Zilsgagni, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Poleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Jake Kellier, Board of Finance.
Town Clerk Therese Pack.
Assistant Don LaBella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cackeen. Item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on October 11th, 2016.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
Item number two is the consent calendar, and there are eight items. Item 2A is to transfer $12,000 within the Capital Nonrecurring Fund for revaluation. 2B is to make an additional appropriation of $234,655 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for code enforcement. 2C is to transfer $107,500 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for Startup Bristol. 2D is to transfer $11,700 within the Sewer Operating and Assessment Fund for the Middle Street Pump Station Project. 2E is to transfer $14,500 within the Public Works Operating Budget. For the purchase of capital outlay items, item 2F is to make an additional appropriation of $65,000 within the Capital Projects Fund funded by contributions. 2G, which actually doesn't need to be on because it's a transfer of $2,200, it doesn't need joint board approval. It is a transfer of $2,200 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund, and later I'll ask for someone to make a motion to have that removed. And then 2H is to make an additional appropriation of $106 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by donations to assist youth and families.
Motion to remove item G.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Motion to approve items A through F and H.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To transfer $11,475 from the General Fund Contingency Account to operating transfers out special revenue.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
To make an additional appropriation of $22,950 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by a grant of $11,475 and a transfer in of $11,475 for the 2016 U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number five.
To approve carryovers from fiscal year 2015-2016 to fiscal year 2016-2017 totaling $56,560 within the General Fund.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number six.
To make an additional appropriation of $2,500,000 within the General Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
To make an additional appropriation of $1 million within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund and $1 million within the Community Development Block Grant Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number eight.
To transfer $75,529,891 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number nine.
To make an additional appropriation of $114,459 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 10.
To decrease appropriations by $17,917,505 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 11.
To transfer $25,188 from the General Fund Contingency Account for St. Vincent de Paul.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 12.
The monthly revenue and expense report from the Controller.
Good evening, everyone. A short report today, not like the prior month. We just a couple items to bring you up to date. Auditors are in full swing. We've got them in until mid-December. Things going along fine. We're somewhat ahead of schedule. We have weekly telephone conferences with the partner in charge. We have one tomorrow. And tomorrow at 9:00 is the mayor's budget kickoff meeting. He took the advice of several counselors that wanted an earlier start to the budget process, so that is going to take place. We'll have forums going out tomorrow. I know Cheryl's going to be there for her comments along with the mayor's, and I have just a few. It's no surprise to you that it's going to be probably a little bit more difficult year than it was in the prior year, and that was difficult. And that's because of the state ongoing deficit situation. And, excuse me, we're going to have some new costs in debt service issuing the $30 million of the $60 million that we have outstanding, so we're going to delay principal, but there'll probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $800,000 in interest that must be paid. But we can delay principal, and that's a situation. We also have another situation I just want to highlight a little bit to you is that we received our, what's called our GASBY 67, 68 reports, what has to do with amounts that we contribute into the pension plan. There's been some significant actuarial changes that have taken place and some new standards that will be reported nationwide. And part of this process is that we were, our police and fire are continuing to be well-funded, but the city is hovering around 100% funded, where it was at a high of 122. There is a recommendation to put funding to bump that back up, and that obviously has an effect on next year's budget to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to recommend that we do that. We are now a AAA community with split rating, and we don't want to lose that possibility of picking up the AAA on S&amp;P and Moody's. So we'll continue to do that. We also are going to continue to, we have this 15-year plan on the other post-employment benefits, they call OPEB, so I'm going to recommend to the boards that you continue with that plan. And the other thing I keep on reminding is that in the Board of Ed, I do this at the Finance Committee, their committee, is that we've got a 2.5% state cap on expenditure increases, appropriation increases. There's a couple items that exempt the debt service that I just mentioned, some capital projects, and special education. John, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just told the mayor, what, police and fire are funded at what?
Well, fires are over 200%, and police is about 170 to 180. They're doing fine.
Okay.
City's taken a hit. We've had a lot of retirees.
Yeah.
And a lot of expenses, as far as that's concerned. So, once again, the budget kickoff, probably just a little bit of news. We, I sat on the panel for the business manager, and we are through the interview process as far as the panel that was put together. Now, we have two viable candidates that are going to go forward to the Personnel Committee of the Board of Education, and in my opinion, both candidates are excellent. Bristol's going to be well-served by whomever they choose, so it's a very positive thing that's going to take place.
To the chair.
I just want to share that the actuary report that Glenn referenced was presented to the Retirement Board about two months ago with their recommendations that the full retirement board had advocated that it was wise to take. And so it's important that we try to budget those changes into this budget this year. If anybody needs a copy of that report, I'm sure we could make one available.
Yes, that's true. So we're doing incremental changes, dropping the expected interest rate down in tenths, going, I think it was from 7.5 to 7.25. Yeah, I think that was it. But it would be way too expensive to drop a quarter of a point when your expectations of income get lowered. Does it inverse affect that your contributions have to be higher? So it was too much of a hit, in my opinion, to drop a quarter of a point, so we're dropping a tenth of a point. We'll do that for the next several years until hopefully the economy picks up.
Any other questions?
When's the last time we made a contribution? Other than the cafeteria side?
Well, yeah, the cafeteria's been consistent. I think we made a contribu-, did we make a contribution last year? I forgot.
Yes.
Yeah, it was on the Board of Ed side.
Yeah.
We did not, we should have contributed on our side, but we decided not to for some savings. That's right, John. So what, the Board of Ed had $44,000.
Right.
And this year, we put the amount that the actuary says, something to the neighborhood, I believe it was 300 and some odd.
About 343.
And I'll be approaching the Board of Finance to take that out of maybe contingency or somewhere else to make sure that we fully fund it, because we only funded $44,000 on the Board of Ed side. We did zero for the current budget. And then the actuarial numbers came in, actually advanced ones today, and the recommendation after a lengthy conversation with our actuaries, you know, you want to keep that AAA, you better fully fund it, because that's what the rating agencies are going to look at. You know, we gave you the AAA, it's not a one-time shot, and then you say, forget all policy. So we're going to make a recommendation. You'll be seeing that come before next month. And we haven't heard back on the separating the special education costs. There seemed to be an alignment for this, at this time. Myself and Mike Dieter presented the report to the Finance Committee of the Board of Education. There was 20% in the first couple months, and now it's only 25. So it went up by 5%. It's kind of leveled off, which is good news in special education. We're watching it very closely.
Mayor, to the chair. I think it's important to note, Glenn, that the 10 basis points change in the expected return that's being phased in over the next few years was approved unanimously by the Retirement Board, but is also approved by our actuaries.
That's correct.
As good practice.
Excellent practice, and that's going to be, I touted that when we got the AAA with Fitch. And our fund, you know, the auditors are in, but Robin has done an excellent job of finding out what the General Fund fund balance is going to be, and it will continue to be at 15% based on the last year, on the current budget we're on. So that, as a rising budget, and we still got it at 15%, that's going to be another positive in our pocket, so we really need to keep things going. These contributions into OPEB and funding the 100% for the pension plan, those are all things that we're going to tout to them in April when they come up here, and I'm pretty confident we're going to do very well with them. Anything else?
Just one more.
Go ahead. Orlando, go.
No, I yield to you.
So I actually have a question about the attorney expenditures, but if you've got other questions on this.
Just a comment on, just the pension fund. We still should note that we're probably one of the few communities around that our pension funds are not underwater, so.
Yeah, without question. Yeah, the prob-, we went to a conference yesterday, Robin and I, and one of the things that Moody's has a new thing is that if you're at 100% funded, it's called treading water. And they do an analysis that says, you know, what's the probability of you going below 100%? And then it kicks in a analysis that when will you run out of money? That doesn't happen for police and fire, but if you're at 100%, this analysis that Moody's has kicks in and says, okay, will you drop below 100? Yes or no? Yes, you got a problem. And then they analyze it further, and it requires a report that says you will run out of money by 2038, you know, something like that. Something may look crazy, but I'm going to make sure that we're going to be at 101, and so.
I won't be here, so that's okay.
Join the club. But anyway. Mayor, I saw that you were looking at.
Yes, I did have an attorney fees question. I don't know if Orlando is next, though.
Go ahead, Mayor. Ladies first.
Thank you. I do appreciate the updated attorney fee report, and I just wanted to sort of check in that we were at about $52,000 last time for the yearly total for the investigations that have happened. And this newest monthly addition added about 23-something, so we're over $75,000. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm not.
Yes, that's correct.
Misstating that. Okay. And I had one more question about the attorney's fees. I know that there had been an action filed by Mr. Camerari, one of our landlords, that we didn't have a great relationship with. And the judicial website shows Howden Ludorf representing us there, but I don't see any attorney's fees for Howden Ludorf. Is that perhaps because our insurance company has hired Howden Ludorf, and we're not actually paying them? I just don't know.
I wouldn't know the answer.
How that works.
Perhaps, yeah, so it was the insurance company hired?
Okay.
That's what he believes.
That makes sense. Thank you. That's fine for me, Orlando.
All right, so I guess it's an education for me in terms of the staffing for corporate counsel. If you look at, you know, one of the earlier pages, you have some charges from the Board of Ed and the Bristol Burlington Health District. And so, two questions there. Do we share the cost with the BBHD? I'm assuming that Burlington has some partnership with us that they may offset part of that pay? And if so, how do we annotate that?
I don't think so. That was for labor negotiations, and they, that's their own charge. That's built into their own budget, so that is not part of us. We don't contribute in any way. They're their own entity.
All right, but they're listed as fees on here for us.
Well, we just listed all the fees. We cut the check, but it's charged to their budget.
And then the Board of Ed, so do, does the Board of Ed use your offices? Or do they have their own separate firms as well? When it's outside, you know, your purview?
In general, they have their own counsel handling, you know, matters. There are things that we will deal with, for example, contract litigation. You'll probably see some things popping up about Green Hill School, for example, those kinds of things, Commissioner.
All right, and then lastly, there are FOIA and FOIC annotations, which I assume are both the same, right? Freedom of Information requests?
I don't really know. I didn't prepare that report, but I'm assuming they're both identical.
I would.
It probably was just the way they liked them.
So the question to the freedom of information, then. Anytime that someone makes a request through the freedom of information, is your office involved in doing some type of work to investigate it and to determine whether we are in compliance or whether we should have a hearing on it?
Most matters we're involved in. Not all matters. If we deem that there's a conflict of some type, for example, there was a FOI complaint by somebody in city government against, you know, the Board of Finance, let's say. You know, we might establish that that's a conflict, since we have both sides of the shop, so we might refer that matter out. But in general, we take the first look at everything that comes in, and then to the extent that we need to ship it out, we do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn. Item number 13, any other business? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Council meeting will start in five minutes. We'll call the special, we'll call the City Council meeting to order Wednesday, November 9th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence for a troop on active duty? Thank you. Like to ask Dave and Michael Hamlin to come up front, please. I think everyone in town knows Hamlin &amp; Sons. Michael, David and Michael, on behalf of the city of Bristol, it is my pleasure to congratulate Hamlin &amp; Sons on its 70th year anniversary of Bristol's automotive needs. A third-generation family-run business is a rarity in town in today's economy, and, let me try it again. A third-generation family business is rarity in today's economy, but smart family business keeps its edge by bringing the next generation with no ideas and current techniques. Each generation contributed to the success of your business by expanding and offering new services assuring long-term viable and success. In addition to the quality service you offered your customers, the leadership that you have shown by organizing other businesses in the Western Association has made a significant difference in our community. Your commitment to the betterment of Bristol is a fine example of the all-harts spirit of our city and an inspiration for others to follow. Again, congratulations to the milestone of the 70 years of doing business in Bristol. We hope that you have many more successful years in Bristol. Sincerely, Mayor Ken Cackeen. Would you like to say a few words? He just said it was his brother.
Well, thank you very much. We just kind of show up every day and do the thing that we like to do the most, and it's really nice that we've managed to last this long and survive. The city of Bristol has been great to us. They've been supportive in everything that we do, and we're just very thankful to be here in the city. It's a great place to live and work, and we intend to be here for a while. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on October 11th, 2016, and the special City Council meeting is on September 15th, 2016, October 4th, 2016, and October 17th, 2016.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Public participation, Sean Ruist.
Good evening, Sean Ruist, 53 Lancaster Road. I think it's clear that I'm not here to dog city government. I have some goals. Some goals are open government, representative government, transparent government. And I'm not really asking for anything special, anything for personal favor, but I'm asking the city to work with me towards those goals. And one of them is getting the city meetings on the city website. Mayor, I know you took action on that. But, so today, I got here a little bit early, took a picture of the clerk's office outside the master calendar, and then I went to the city website. Big difference between the two, okay? I'm sure not everybody in Bristol has the time or wants to drive down here and look outside the clerk's office to find out what kind of meetings are happening. But on the calendar, you can find in the city website the Joint Board, City Council, Board of Park Commissioners, BDA Downtown, BDA Regular Committee, Board of Finance meetings. But what you don't find on there, I'm not even going to go down. I mean.
Sean, I will look at it. I'll check in it again tomorrow and see what's going on.
Appreciate that.
Is there, there's more meetings than there used to be. They're slowly coming on. Is that correct?
I'm personally very interested in getting information about Transportation Commission meetings, which there used to be a master list out there, and it's not there, and I guess it's obsolete now. I don't, I'm not sure. Development, Transportation, they go hand-in-hand now, so.
Okay, I will check on that again tomorrow.
That's my thing. The other thing, it's nice to hear people express interest in referendum, and thank you, Mary, for bringing that up last month. I wasn't here. I did actually address the City Council on June 2015 with what my idea was for referendum, and I actually gave a copy to the Charter Revision Commission on April 18th, 2016, but I did bring a copy again tonight. And it's for something called project referendum, which would be a change to the city charter, so it'd be something that I have to start with initiative. And I'm not a lawyer. But this is just an issue that I think more people have come before the City Council and said, hey, it should be on the ballot than asking for, say, the police or fire chief to live outside the city where we live, work, and play, and all that stuff. But project referendum, Section A, would be a referendum on a project voted upon and approved by the City Council. That costs, if you don't like to number, $6 million. I didn't pick it. We can work together and change it if you seriously want to help move forward with this. $6 million or more city funds adjusted by the cost of living adjustment determined by the most current Consumer Price Index. I mean, it's technical. I borrowed it from somebody else's charter. But the difference between this and a non-binding referendum is, number one, this would be binding. It would be also citizen-initiated. And number one, to get this on here, I'd have to get, what? 3,000, 4,000 signatures? That would be verified, and then it would have to go to a vote before we pass it. And then before anyone is able to use this, you'd have to do the same thing again. You'd have to get 3,000 or 4,000 signatures from the residents of Bristol. I'm really not trying to tie the city's hands. I have to explain this stuff, because every time I talk about these things, people try to put words in my mouth and try to twist it into being something different. I'm not asking for anything that other cities our size have in their charter. And if it doesn't work with the charter, let's find a way to make it work with the charter, or give me your own idea, or give me your own number. So I printed it all. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Who wants a copy? Does anybody want a copy?
You can leave with the city clerk. She'll get it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just ask, Your Honor, if a copy could be produced for Attorney Coricke's office, only because we did, Sean, when you weren't here, I was asking Attorney Coricke to respond to, you know, what our charter does and doesn't provide for, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, there is another speaker. However, according to our city charter, you need to be a Bristol Lecter or Bristol property owner, so we're going to move on. That's all the public participation we have. Announcements, any announcements standing off far left?
I do have just a couple. As we all know, we had an election yesterday, and I just did want to report that the Inspire computer-assisted voting for the disabled folks were used in Bristol. Several people at each voting location were able to make use of these computerized assistance for disabled folks, so that's a great addition to our registrar's office, So that's a great addition to our registrar's office, what they provide for voting. And once again, I just want to talk about water bills and suggest to people that they consider switching from paper to online bills if they hadn't done so. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, that one of the focus, a primary focus of all of us here in this body is economic development. As we enter the last two months of the calendar year, this is probably one of the most important times of the year for retail shoppers. I just want to remind everyone, because as we talk to our constituents, everybody's concerned about downtown Bristol, economic development, active businesses. I'd like to encourage everyone, and as I'm sure we all do, to shop Bristol as much as you can. We've got a lot of great vendors, chains, mom and pops that could use our support. How we develop Bristol is based really on what we have now. Their success leads to more success. I read a report from the restaurant research group lately, because everybody wants more restaurants in downtown Bristol. And I learned that if you buy one gift certificate at a restaurant, and it'd be great to do, right, for our local restaurants, it could lead to at least an average of four reservations for that restaurant, the way they work their numbers. So buying one gift certificate could mean four more tables full in one of our restaurants. So please consider shopping Bristol this end of year. Thanks.
Yeah, the only announcement I had was just to the workers, the poll workers yesterday, and commend them and the job they did. I think the election went rather smoothly. I know the area that I was checking on was Eastern High School, and it had about 75%, 76% participation, and everything went very smoothly. So I just want to commend the workers. That's it.
Yeah, I have a few. First, I want to say congratulations to the people that won yesterday. Henry Martin Kerr, Pavelak Whitbets, and Chris Syogas for representing Bristol in Hartford this coming year. And I also want to thank those who put themselves out there but didn't win. Pete Delmastro, Crystal Myers, Laura Bartok, and Mike Nacastro. We know that they have Bristol at, the best interests of Bristol at heart, and it takes a lot to get up and put yourselves out there, so I commend their efforts. I also want to let everybody know that the Bristol Boys and Girls Club is having a glam night for mothers and daughters next Friday, 11/18. And coming up in the next month, the Webster Bank Carol Sing is going to be held on Tuesday, November 29th, at 7:00. The Bristol Choral Society is having their winter concert on December 11th at 4:00 at St. Paul. And finally, I also wanted to acknowledge two things that are happening this week. Tomorrow is the 241st birthday of the United States Marine Corps. So I wanted to say happy birthday to all Marines out there, especially my husband, my father, and former Mayor Art Ward. And then Friday is Veterans Day. And I wanted to send my sincere congratulations, appreciation, thank you to every member of our armed services who have served our country. Thank you.
Counselor?
I'll just make a comment on Election Day as well. I was at Northeast School for most of the day, actually, standing with, you know, next to Calvin. And we were standing there together. And I kind of want to make the comment that I was very pleased with the professionalism, the decorum of everyone. I know that yesterday's election was contentious on the national level, and that sometimes brings out the worst in people. And I'm proud to say that from where I was, that the city of Bristol should be proud that residents got along, did the right thing, engaged, and they're very friendly. And I'm very proud to be part of Bristol in a community that even though we have a difference of opinion, we still all know how to get along. And, you know, I think everyone can kind of agree with me on that, or I hope that they can agree with me on that. So I want to mention that that was one of the biggest takes from working at the election, was everyone got along, and it's good to see.
I definitely agree with you, Councilor Damato. It was a lot of fun standing outside of Northeast Middle School over in the first district and seeing voters come in. There was a lot of excitement. There was a lot of people being engaged that sometimes aren't as engaged in the election, so it was good to see. And it reminded me that Bristol is, despite differences of opinions that we might have, Bristol is a place that welcomes people of all backgrounds. Doesn't matter who you are, or where you come from, or where your parents come from. It doesn't matter the color of your skin, or your ethnicity, or your national origin, your gender, your political affiliations, who you love. Bristol is a place that's open to everyone, and we're a community that supports one another. And that's, that is what it felt like yesterday, when I was supporting the candidates that I was supporting, but standing next to my Republican friends too. So that was a good feeling, despite some of the, some of the more contentiousness that we see on the national level, which was well stated by my colleague from the first district. And of course, I want to second what Councilor Zilsgagney said about our, the men and women serving in the armed forces. Thank you to you on this Veterans Day. And also, of course, this will be our last city council meeting before Thanksgiving. So have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy the time with your families, and may it be a blessed one.
And I just have two. We have two Veterans Day celebrations, one at Chippensburg Middle School at 11:00 AM on Friday, and then a second one in Forestville Center at 1:30 PM. So hopefully you could make time to attend those. And item number five.
It's the consent calendar, and there are nine items. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for October 2016. 5B is to approve the tax refunds dated November 2nd, 2016. C is to place on file the recommendation from the Hearing and Assessment Committee to discontinue a portion of the Cross Street right-of-way. D is to establish a building committee for the Chippensburg Middle School roof parapet walls replacement at Chippensburg Middle School. E is to approve the education specifications for the Chippensburg Middle School roof parapet walls project at Chippensburg Middle School. F is to approve the project for the Chippensburg Middle School roof parapet walls replacement at Chippensburg Middle School. G is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign the fiscal year 2016-2017 Bristol Local Prevention Council grant application and any other necessary documents to sponsor initiatives to prevent use of alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. H is to approve a tax assessment freeze application for Steve Pappas, Hosek Realty, owners of 38 Stern Street Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a four-family apartment building per Bristol Code of Ordinance, is Section 5-57. And I is to refer to the Planning Commission the request from Daniel Setula to convey to the city of Bristol assessors lots 20 and 22 Warner Street and Maple Avenue totaling 4.43 acres.
Have a motion to accept. I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. I'd just like to make one comment on item number H, the building on 38 Stern Street. This is a building that we took code enforcement action on, let's say, over a year ago. We condemned the building. It was very bad. New investor came in, invested significant dollars into this building. And this building and the one across the street that we also condemned, we have transformed that neighborhood. And this is just a small, little piece of what our, what our code enforcement is doing. So Steve has done an outstanding job on that building, and I'm happy to see the way it's looking. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes. Real estate, reports in committee, real estate.
Yes, I've got a couple other motions concerning Chippensburg School. A motion resolved the city council authorized the Bristol Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education to accept the grant for the Chippensburg School roof/parapet walls replacement located at Chippensburg School, 551 Peasdale Street in Bristol, Connecticut.
Move it.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
Second one is resolved that the city council hereby authorize the lease, at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Chippensburg Middle School roof/parapet walls replacement located at Chippensburg Middle School, 551 Peasdale Street in Bristol, Connecticut.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
The next motion I have is I hereby move that the city of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the city of Bristol landlord and the Bristol Burlington Health District tenant for a portion of the property located at Douglas A. Beal Senior Centers, Bristol, Connecticut, for a three-year term commencing January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2019. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $50,416.38 per year, or $4,201.36 per month, beginning January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, which is based on a rental of 3,136 square feet at $16.76 per square foot. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $51,172.62 per year, or $4,264.38 per month, for each month beginning January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, which is based on a rental of 3,136 square feet at $16.31.78 per square foot. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $51,940.21 per year, or $4,328.35 per month, for each month beginning January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, which is based on a rental of 3,136 square feet at $16.56.26 per square foot. I hereby move that this matter be referred to the corporation council to prepare any or all and review the necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
I think that motion needs to be a little longer next time.
I want you to repeat that, if you would.
You got the short end of the stick.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
Ready for the next one now? Okay, here we go. I hereby move that the city of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the city of Bristol landlord and the police mutual aid of Bristol Incorporated, the tenant, for a portion of the property located at 131 North Main Street, basement floor, Bristol, Connecticut, to be used for the purpose of exercise, fitness, and shower room facility for the term of three years commencing on January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2018, for the annual rent of $1 per year. I further move that this matter be referred to the corporation council to prepare any or all, any or all, and review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes. NMC.
And we got a third one, as soon as I can pull it up here. I hereby move to grant to Barter Business Unlimited permission to use a portion of Center Square for overflow parking for customer open house on December 3rd, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, provided that all insurance requirements are provided to the city. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location at Center Square. I further move that this matter be referred to the corporation council office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes. Any other committee reports standing off our left?
None from me.
Two, Mayor. Quickly, every month I try to give you an update on the BD, from the BDA, on the Bristol Development Authority, on Center Square and in the hospital project. In September, we gave the hospital a 60-day extension of its letter of intent. They're working diligently on selecting the, their developer that will be their partner in the project. And they're in the final stages now. We should probably hear something in December, Mayor, I think? Yes, in December. I want everyone to know, though, that in the interim, the mayor and several departments of the city are actively involved in the development of plants. And Malone and McBroom, our consultants, are working on the roadway, the, at least the beginning stages of a planned roadway, streetscapes. And everything is being done to encourage walkability, bicycle, a bicycle-friendly environment, and something that we think would be very proud of for our center city. But, you know, we often talk so many times about Center Square, but we forget some of the other achievements, I think, that are going on downtown. If you haven't been to the new supernatural location on North Main Street, I urge you to go. They've done a great job. They've made some, a huge commitment in terms of capital and to make this thing absolutely beautiful. It's something I think we can all be proud of. I know many of us go. Mayor, I know you go. I go. And you can expect ribbon cuttings down on Southeast Industrial Park for the Pods Building, which if you haven't been by, the signage is up. It's a massive building. It's really, it's quite impressive. And Amco is developing, progressing as well. So we'll see ribbon cuttings, I think, in early 2017. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a quick report from the Bristol School Readiness Program. Bristol School, Bristol Board of Education, Bristol Preschool Child Center, Child Care Center, and Imagination, a museum, early learning center at the Bristol School Readiness Program. The Board of Ed offers programs at Hubble School, Ivy Drive School, Mountain View School, and South Side School. These are part-day, part-year spaces and have a sliding fee scale for payment. Bristol Preschool Child Care Center and Imagination Center provide full-day, full-year spaces and also use a sliding fee scale for payment. All of these programs are accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children and meet the high-quality standards as required by the School Readiness Grant. The School Readiness Grant services children ages three and four and prepares them to be ready and be able to learn for kindergarten. Presently, they have openings in all school readiness programs, and they are looking for pre-K age children. For our part-time spaces, they must be Bristol residents, but our full-time spaces can accept non-Bristol residents. If anyone is interested in obtaining more information about school readiness or would like to enroll your child, please contact the following representatives from the school representatives of school readiness programs. And I have theirs. We have a lady named Sue Huff, Melissa Shackford, and Sarah Castles, and I have their numbers in case anybody wants them. But again, this is a vital program to the city. It's something that is offered and makes a huge difference in kindergarten. Very familiar with the kindergarten programs, and I know that when a child attends preschool, especially for multiple years, they are certainly ready for kindergarten, which helps the kindergarten teachers significantly. And now with all-day kindergarten, it certainly enables them to learn the skills that they need to be successful in the rest of school. So if anyone is interested, knows any, has, knows anyone that at that level, they should contact these folks and get involved in this program. That's all I have.
Counselor, Dave?
Mayor, thank you. Let's get back. Mr. Malley asked me to read a resolution from the BDA. This goes back to, we've selected a vendor to oversee the remediation work down on Middle Street, and we need council's approval for the contract. So the resolution is as follows. Be it hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Bristol, Connecticut, that the award of a contract in the amount of $356,000, Trinobis Engineering, Inc., to perform professional services relative to remediation activities at the Brownfield site located at 894 Middle Street is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth B. Karkane, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to sign such contract pursuant to the terms and conditions established by the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, which is funding the grant.
Second.
Discussion. Let me just say that this is all part of the 1 point, roughly $3 million grant that we had for remediation and cleanup of that site. This is the same site that we're looking to hopefully get a fuel cell on there across from ESPN. So this is going to be a very valuable piece of land in Bristol coming into our quarter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all, resolution standing off our left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have two. First, from the Parks Department, there will be the annual Turkey Shoot non-November 18th at Chippensburg Middle School from 9:30 AM to noon for Bristol youth ages eight to 13, and that is a free event. Registration is on currently for the Learn to Swim classes, which begin next week. The recent Halloween carnival and costume parade was very well attended. There was more than 1,000 people. And the Parks Department wants everyone to know that the American flags along Memorial Boulevard will be removed beginning December 7th and will be put back up in early April. And the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee did not have a meeting last week because we are continuing with our efforts to try to solve the parking issue. As many of you may remember, we would like to build a theater that is approximately 750 seats. In order to do so, we need at least 250 parking spaces, which we do not have on the current site. So we are trying to work with those issues right now. So things are moving forward, but right now there are no definite plans and, of course, no definite numbers. If you hear any definite numbers, do not believe it. We are still working on it, but we are moving forward. Thank you.
None from me, Your Honor.
Yes, quickly, the Youth Services Department in Bristol is getting really busy right now, gearing up for their, all the work that they do to help families over the impending holidays. So if you're somebody that's interested in doing what you can to help them, to maybe donate some goods or volunteer some time to help young families over the holiday season, that would be a great entity to get involved with and find out how you might be able to help out. They could always use the help. And you can get in touch with them over on High Street. 51 High Street is where the Youth Services Building is here in Bristol. And you can call them at 860-314-4690. This is a busy time of year for them, always busy for them, but it really makes a difference in the lives of so many Bristol families. And also from the library, November 10th, so that's tomorrow, November 10th through the 17th, the Bristol Libraries will be honoring area veterans. Man Ross Library will hold its annual Veterans Coffee Social, hosted by Bob Montgomery, tomorrow, November 10th, at 9:00 AM. Also on November 10th, the Bristol Public Library will co-host with the DRA John Ald of the 25th Continental Regiment to discuss the life of the Continental Soldier and display period equipment. On November 17th, at 6:30 PM at the Bristol Public Library, Arthur Witnick Jr. of Connecticut will present Nam Sense, excuse me, Nam Sense, Surviving Vietnam with the 101st Airborne Division. Arthur was the first to reach the top of the Battle of Hamburger Hill and will be on the History Channel on Veterans Day presenting the program, The Endless War. So if you'd like to hear more from him, that's on November 17th at 6:30 PM at the Bristol Public Library. And as an official commemorative partner of the Vietnam 50th Commemoration, Bristol Public Library will fly the Vietnam 50th Commemorative Flag during the entire period beginning tomorrow from, through November 17th, 2016. So thank you to the library for everything that they're doing to honor veterans this Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and beyond. That's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Braun had asked me to give a little update on code enforcement, so- Counselman Braun had asked me to give a little update on code enforcement, so this is what we have. The filing code enforcement took action, filing code enforcement actions took place. Tall vegetation and grass, 111 complaints. This is, let me back up, this is starting from July 1 of 2015, because it's easier to go fiscal year. 111 complaints. 27 had to be cut by contractor hired by the City of Bristol. We hired Bark. These actions took place from May 6 to October 6. Housing officer, Bristol Burlington Health District, had 142 complaints, 41 orders, issued nine citations, 10 housing court visits, and five citations, appeal hearings since January 2016. Fire inspectors, 264 multifamilies inspected. This is three families and over since January 2016. Abatement orders were issued, and each case is being managed to reach compliance. Tax assessor's office, there are 15 calendar since January 2016. Assessment freeze applications in the process, and 12 new applications out of 37 total final approval rehabilitation properties which received the tax-free basement. Relocations due to condemnation, orders for 2016, 10 properties, 17 units, five of which were illegal units. One not-required relocation, completed relocations totaled four properties or eight units. Of the completed relocations, the city paid upfront for one hotel stay and was reimbursed by landlord. Otherwise, the city did not have to pay for city relocations. No limbs replaced on any of the properties. The landlords worked in cooperation with community services to either relocate the tenants themselves, or tenants worked in conjunction with relocation specialists to find permanent housing. Illegal dwelling units are not eligible for relocation benefits. Code enforcement actions originating from Building Department totaled 342 cases from July 1, 2015, to July 1, 2016. Abatement of code enforcement violations during this time period included two demolitions, totaling approximately $812,000. That's total of all the work. From July 6 to 2016 to present, we acted on 49 cases. Zoning enforcement, under the direction of the Building Department, had 202 cases from July 15 to July 16, and 64 cases from July until present. The Building Department, in conjunction with Corporation Council Purchasing Office, Tax Collector Office, and Comptroller's Office, has begun revamping the enforcement and abatement process. This is because of new state statutes recently passed that will have an effect on the manner in which we issue orders, issue abatement work, and collecting fine enforcement bills. Once these processes are determined, we can provide more details. So as you could see, code enforcement has been very busy, as they were from day one last term, and it's really paying off in Bristol. We see the neighborhoods turning around. We just talked earlier about the Stern Street property, and I have to commend our city staff for doing an outstanding job, and in times being really overwhelmed with the complaints coming in from neighbors, because they see that we're actually taking these complaints serious, and we're not just pushing them under the rug. Any questions on that?
Is that something that you have in a memo that could be shared with ESPN?
Yeah, I could get you that.
That'd be great.
Probably be Monday, tomorrow is Halloween, but I'll get it to you.
Sure.
All the council.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. And that's all I have. Any unfinished business, standing my far right?
None for me, Your Honor.
None, Your Honor.
None.
None, Your Honor.
None.
I do have some, and I would ask that the Personnel Director come up to just follow up on some things that we've been talking about. Hi. Following up on my question that I've asked at the last several meetings about sexual harassment training, I know that you've sent us some memos, and I think for the public's benefit, and in, I guess in favor of transparency, I don't want to be asking questions and then stop asking them, and no one else has heard the answer, just because you've sent us some emails. We did have an email conversation after the last meeting about sexual harassment training for mayors, because you had told us that our current mayor had not had that training, and I asked if other mayors had had that training, because there is a statute about supervisors needing the training. And your email to me did say that only Mayor Stortz was the only mayor in your tenure that had participated in that training. I did want to follow up and say, was that something that you asked them to do? I mean, did you ever raise that with them? Did you ever offer that to them, other than Mayor Stortz? Or was that just something that you didn't feel they were supervisors under the statute?
I can't recall whether we specifically asked them or not. We do training here periodically. We train all new supervisors, so I think what I said in my emails, it was an oversight, and obviously elected officials should attend.
That's fine. And I know, and I know we've all decided that even council folks who perhaps are not supervisors, but that they're going to participate. And that gets to your most recent email today about the fact that the training is going to have to be rescheduled because of some conflicts, and I understand that. You had said previously, though, that the mayor was scheduled to do training on October 25. Did that ever happen?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think that we're up to date on that, so that the training for supervisors here that have not had training, including council folks, will be upcoming, and you'll let us know.
Well, the training that's recommended by the report, all of their supervisors have had training either as new hires or periodically throughout their time.
Right. I just meant if there's anyone new, obviously, if there's a new supervisor, they participate in what you're planning for right now.
Right. And the intent is to send the department heads and supervisors to this training as well, even if they've already been.
Okay. Because we're, based, again, on your emails, we're considering that this is going to be sort of an upgraded version of the training that's been provided in the past here.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And before you go anywhere, you did provide us a memorandum, I think it's dated October 27, with regard to the Building Department. Roger Michelle had made a statement here at the August meeting, and you sent us a memo. I have quite a few questions about the memo, but I want to start with, why did you undertake this response to him? Do you know what I mean? And I guess I mean, I assume the mayor asked you to, but I'm just, I guess I'm wondering why it would be you as opposed to anyone else? That's my first question.
Well, obviously, in the memo, I was directed by the mayor to do that, so that's why I did it. Typically, our office handles investigations of different sorts, reviews of other departments. It could have been handled elsewhere, but it wasn't.
Okay. I guess my, I'm just wondering whether it should have been independent, and I'm not, and I'm not talking here about any conflicts, but I'm talking more about the nature of building departments. In other words, you know, if someone said our water treatment plant wasn't treating water properly, I'm not sure either you or I could investigate that, just because we don't really know how water is supposed to be treated. And I guess what I'm suggesting is, in some of the, some of these complaints were very technical about interpreting the building statutes, and, you know, what's a demolition, and what's a, you know, what's keeping a building on the same footprint, et cetera, and that perhaps someone from another community might have been of assistance in terms of that side of it.
Well, I think, first of all, it's important to know that Roger Michelle brought that complaint in August, and it was, the complaints that he brought forward were at least 2008, 2009 complaints. He was not that forthcoming with information, so we did the review based on the six properties that he gave us information on. I think we did enough of a review of the information in the Building Department to realize that there were recommendations that needed to be made, and I don't know that any other review at this point would be worthwhile, because we identified several issues that need to be addressed to tighten up the process and be more transparent about how the fee structure works.
And I did appreciate your recommendations about some of the fees, and I understand, like particularly the idea that you get sometimes permits in sections, and that has to be obviously documented so that we can follow up and make sure that the other parts of those permits are paid for. I understand that, and I do appreciate it. And I do understand that the timeframe was years ago. I do get that. One thing that we didn't receive in the information is who any of the owners are in these properties, and I'm wondering if you thought that was important at all, particularly since some of these allegations were that favors had been done, or might have been done, or, you know, some sort of special treatment was extended to some of these properties. You listed them by properties, but you didn't tell us who might be the person that might have gotten special treatment.
Sure. And if you'd like that information, I'd be happy to provide it.
Well, I was just wondering if you had identified, you know, I realize you didn't identify them to us, but did you identify them for yourself, and did that?
They're listed on the permit applications and in the files.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And there were no red flags there, per se? I mean, there was nothing there that suggested to you that maybe you needed to speak to them, or anything like that, that you knew them, or?
Well, of course. Actually, one of the permits was former Chief Posey, and so I actually called him up about that permit.
Okay. All right.
And also, part of the review did include talking to other city staff, so I wasn't going out on my own to learn the building process by myself. I went to the zoning enforcement officers, spoke to the city engineer, spoke to the town planner, so I am certainly no expert on the Building Department.
No, I get that.
But I think it was a thorough enough review to identify areas that can be improved upon.
And there were a few places where you said that there were allegations that the building official had either had work done on a vehicle, or stored vehicles at some of these different properties, and that that perhaps was, you know, a reason for, again, alleged special treatment, and I realize that this, you know, not a lot here, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, you say here that the building official acknowledged having work done, but that he paid for the work, or, you know, that there was nothing, you know, he didn't get a discounted rate or anything for any special treatment. Did you see any invoices, or?
I didn't even, quite frankly, look that deeply into those issues, because quite frankly, they're eight years old. It was a stray comment by Mr. Michelle. I'd be happy to forward the emails that he sent, and there was no other information about it. I mean, I asked, I inquired of Guy Moore.
All right. Well, we got like a 27-page report here, so I just, I'm just trying to make sure that.
Right. So I'm happy to provide Roger Michelle's original email to us, which, again, he made accusations, just as he did at this podium, without a lot of documentation.
Let me also add that my office, I personally called Roger myself, and my staff called him no less than two times, and he was not interested in going any farther than what he spoke at the podium.
Okay. I just, you know, again, we got this report kind of out of the blue, so I just wanted to see if I could, you know, ask some questions about it. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And I do appreciate the suggestions you did make on certain of the files, so thank you.
And just to follow up, the mayor met with Guy, was it last Friday, and has, they've put down an action plan, put an action plan together to address those issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
New business, standing my far left.
None for me. Thank you.
None.
None.
None, Your Honor.
One second, Your Honor. No, none for me.
None for me. Resignations.
There are three resignations. The first is from Ryan Scritterell from the Zoning Commission. The second is from Sean Moed from the Bristol Parking Authority, and the third is from Joseph Martin from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
I have a motion to accept, and send him a letter of thank you, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Appointments. Commission on Aging to appoint Larry Zabrowski to replace Lois Gray. Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 317.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. City historian to reappoint Robert Montgomery, two-year term to 1118.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Inland Wetlands Commission, mayor's appointment. Tracy Perot made regular member to replace Sharon Kennedy, resigned, unexpired term to 517.
To move.
Dennis Hart made regular member to replace Joseph Martin, resigned, unexpired term to 518. Plainville Area Cable Television Advisory to appoint Lydia Jiskie to replace George, I'm going to need help with that one.
Or Zakowski.
Thank you. Or Zakowski. I didn't get the first one right either, right? I didn't think I did. And I apologize. Resigned, unexpired term to 617. I should have asked Dave to say this.
Yeah, you should have.
I could have motioned to accept.
Motion so moved.
Sorry, second.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Zoning Commission to appoint James Albert to replace Ryan Scroll as regular member, resigned, unexpired term to 619.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let me say that we have a number of open appointments, so if anyone out there is interested in getting on a board, please contact my office, any of your council people, through email, Facebook. We all have Facebook. I think some of us even have Twitter, and let us know, and, you know, we'll look for a board that most fits you and what you're interested in. Item number 11.
Word of contract, 2017-32, fire pumper vehicle to Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated for $545,800, and authorization from mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary.
My motion.
Second.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding approval of grant pre-application with the U.S. Economic Development Administration for Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program to fund street construction and infrastructure improvements at Center Square. And there is a resolution to read.
So I'm okay to read it.
I can read that. Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant pre-application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program to fund street construction and infrastructure improvements at the Center Square project is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth B. Kocain, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute such application.
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes.
Your Honor, roll call.
Roll call. Standing my far right.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 13 and 14.
And there's two executive sessions. The first is to discuss the matter of Gerard Perry versus City of Bristol, file number 601-036045, and executive session to discuss the matter of City of Bristol versus Nation Star Mortgage LLC, docket number HHB CV166032655S.
Who's going in?
Our office on both matters, and Eric Bartlett, our outside counsel, on the Perry matter.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session.
So move it.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Motion to come back into session?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Let the record show, and we'll take an executive session. Do you have any motions to come before you?
Yes, Your Honor. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of the City of Bristol versus Nation Star Mortgage LLC, docket number HHB CV166032655S, for consideration of payment by the defendant for the sum of $38,333. I further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporation counsel, or assistant corporation counsel be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Any other motion?
Yes, I have one. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the consideration I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the consideration of a payment in the amount of $70,000 for the indemnity portion only in the following workers' compensation cases made by Gerard Perry.